Evening, everyone. Right, we don't have any public, so I won't make the announcements, you know, about all the evacuation filming stuff. And moving swiftly on. So apologies.
I haven't received any.
Right, there we go. Any declarations of interest, anybody? No? Can I sign the minutes of the meeting on the 3rd of June? Thank you. We don't have any public questions. So, questions from colleagues who are not, items not on the agenda. So councillor Jeeps, Steele, anybody else? No? Okay, councillor Jeeps, yeah.
I want to draw to the attention of the council an article that was in the Sunday Telegraph magazine on the 16th of June this year. It concerns Britain's growing wildfires and problems. I'm doing this because our residents are very concerned, particularly in the Beaulieu area, about the risks of wildfires and the threat to their homes. This feature, the article that's in the paper, is supported by several experts. And to be precise, it's a four-page article which I don't intend to obviously read out, but I'm going to summarise some of the main issues. Because I think it's a risk that's not being taken seriously enough by the council. It states in the article, Britain has already suffered record numbers of wildfires in 2025. National index of fire severity rate in the UK has levied many areas as very high, only one below the top rating of exceptionally high. It provides an example in the 2022 fires of Winnington, where 17 homes and several other buildings were destroyed by wildfire, and the wildfire near Dagenham. And it uses these to illustrate that unless preventative action is taken, this will become a likely scenario elsewhere. It states the obvious, that it is also the precious wildlife habitats that will be affected as well. Never before has Britain had so many homes destroyed by wildfires. And it's no longer in this country that we can dismiss them as a so-called urban-rural interface as something that happens only in other countries. It recommends in the article, fire-wise communities for those that join open land in order to mitigate and manage the risks. It concludes with asking that this threat be taken seriously, a question that I asked the council to do, and obviously echo that, and rather than wait for the experiences that these poor people have left their homes to be experienced by others. That's really the point I wanted to make.
It's a point, but what's the question?
The question is, are we going to take it seriously and think about the risks that we are exposing people to by not taking proper precautions or looking at risk assessments in the proper way?
Is councillor Moore there? Okay.
Thank you councillor Jeeps. We do take this seriously, to take it very seriously, and wildfires are not anything that we see here. We have a management plan in place for our grassland areas that the council manages. And the fires that do occur, as you will probably remember, are often stubble arable crops, much more likely to cause distress and alarm, in areas that are not monitored as regularly as we monitor our own through risk assessment. And yes, there are risk assessments in place. Recently, only recently, we've been in touch once again with the Garden Community Council in Chelmsford, who I know have raised issues before around areas in Beaulieu Park. And they have now been responded to by the local fire service. So we've had a dialogue and evidence has gone back of the risk assessments that are in place. ONS this year in February went through our management plan, together with an APSY report, which is for Excellence in Management of Public Spaces. Both of those attest to the fact that we are following all of the best advice. And it's the first duty of us as councillors and of council staff to observe public safety. Why would we do anything less than that? So in answer to your statement, I'm aware of fires that have happened elsewhere. Our staff and I, and we all are, are aware of climate change and the need to take action to address that. But only through restoring those grassland areas and keeping areas greener and managing them correctly can we hope to mitigate the climate crisis.
Yep, go on.
I commend you to read this article and the expert advice in this, which is contrary to some of the things that you've said. There's a huge amount of detail in here, and it talks about the drying summers, and I think we see that in these areas. It's not where the grass is green, it's where the exceptionally dry weather has dried out the grasses, which then fan and they burn. And this is about the interface between homes and open ground, and the risks that there are to there. And the recommendations in here are very clear. So after the meeting, I will hand this over to you so that you can read it, supported by many experts, including the fire chief of Greater London. Thank you.
Still not quite sure what your point was councillor Jeeps. And maybe if you regard this as so important, maybe why don't you bring it to overview and scrutiny as the chair, instead of cancelling the meetings because of lack of business? Maybe it would have something on the agenda that you could talk about?
I think that's rather rude. I haven't cancelled meetings through lack of agenda. There's been several reasons why they've been cancelled. And I do think it's important. It's something that's been raised several times. It is actually about people's homes. It's about the risk to them. And that's why I think it's important to raise it. I don't like to be dismissed when I'm raising something which I think is a serious concern. Thank you.
You haven't actually, actually asked a question about something for which the council's responsible. In her answer, councillor Moore pointed out, I mean, I'm, you know, the most recent, I think it was the most recent, maybe there were another, last year, there was a fire on, to the north-west of the corner of the wall I represent, on an arable field. It was probably the biggest fire that we've had in Chelmsford in a long time. And that's nothing to do with the council.
I suggest, Chair, that you read this article as well, and then you'd understand why I'm concerned, and why the people of Beaulieu are concerned, and other people that live near very flammable areas of grassland, which could ignite and set fire to their homes. Thank you.
Councillor Steele?
Thank you, Mr chairman. I'm going to ask a question about LGR.
Go on, nothing else to talk about. That's all we ever talk about.
Sorry?
That's all we ever talk about, yeah.
Yeah, so this isn't about it's all going to work, because the standard answer to how it's going to work is, we'll work that out in the next two years. So I'm not naive enough to ask that question. I want to ask about what's actually going on at the moment. So, I know city councils are promoting or want five, the five option, okay? And I understand that that's the decision, I think, by the leader or the cabinet, and we're not involved in that decision. I understand that. Now, question, I've got three questions. Question number one, Southend Council claimed to be doing a survey on behalf of several of the councils, including Chelmsford City Council. Can you confirm that that's the case, that they're doing it on behalf of Chelmsford City Council? That's question one, okay? Question two, this survey just presents the option five, but not the others. And then it asks you to give a view as to whether you're in favour, against, neutral, or so on. It doesn't actually talk about the other options. So it's kind of, it's a bit of a leading question, as they say in the courts, and doesn't present the other possible options. So I think it's a bit, personally, I think it's a biased survey. So the question, do you not, do you not think, if you're going to do a survey, you ought to be presenting all the other options, otherwise you're doing a national grid, aren't you? You're just presenting the one option, the one you prefer. And the third question, I've got parish councils complaining at me that they're not involved in the process. Do you think, and I'm a bit neutral on this, so I'm looking for a genuine answer from you, do you think parish councils should be involved? Do they have, and I'm just talking about the determination, because the current question really is just whether it's two, three, four, or five, and not how it works with parish councils, I'm not talking about that. And they're getting a bit frustrated because I think they're being ignored. And the survey that Southend are doing, for example, does not have the ability to tick, I'm doing this on behalf of a parish council, it's an anonymous survey by individuals. So they are being pushed out in a way. And I say I am neutral, and I welcome knowing your opinion of whether they should be consulted, and if so, how, or are they just out of the, because it's all been decided at high level, really, and it's not, it's not even involved in the public. So them three questions.
Sure, thank you. I'm very happy to answer all of those questions. So yes, the survey is being done, it's just hosted on the Southend Council website, had to be hosted on a website. So it's hosted on behalf of all of the councils who are promoting the five unitary model, which is the majority of the council, district council, well, districts and majority of the councils in Essex are promoting the five unitary option. When the survey was drawn up, there was no clarity about what the alternative business case, or cases might be. It's only in the last few days that councillor Bentley has made clear the county council's final position, because they were considering 16 options and then reduced it to eight. I mean, you probably know, you know this, because you've discussed it in the Conservative group at County Hall. And so councillor Bentley announced, was it Thursday? Was it last Thursday? I think it was last Thursday, that the county council's preferred option was what is known in the trade in the Grant Thornton Report as option 3.2. That is the county council's preferred position.
I think they've got as far as one of the three options, I'm not sure they've talked this out.
No, they did. No, so Kevin called a meeting yesterday, to which invited all the leaders, at which he confirmed that that is the county council's position is 3.2. Rochford want, have created four new, four alternative options for three, and have preferred what they now call 3.9. They've created four, four other options for a four unitary model, and said they, if they, they'd like, they'd prefer a 4.8, but they'd settle for 3.9, and they hope that the county council would agree with one or the other of those. And if they, if they didn't, then Rochford won't support anything. Braintree and Harlow haven't supported anything, any, come firmly down on what, for one option or the other, although Braintree has stated its very strong preference to work with Colchester and Tendring in whatever happens. And Thurrock want four, but a different four from what Rochford want, although they might be persuaded to support the five. So basically, all the Conservative councils think different things. The Lib Dem, Labour, and independent-led councils are all behind the five unitary model. The survey, as I say, was drawn up at the time before, there was no clarity. So there is a par, there is a sentence in there which says, other councils are working on other options which are likely to mean fewer larger councils. Because that's all, that was the only alternative that we could describe, because there was no clarity about an alternative. So all we can say is, we know that whatever alternatives are submitted, they will be for fewer than five, for larger than five. And on, so I think that's answered your questions, one and two. And on the parishes, so Nick Evely and I had a briefing in here just over a month ago for all the parish councils, and the majority of parish councils attended, some sending chair and clerk, some sending one or the other, but they were all invited and most, most of them attended. And they said that it was really helpful, we had a lot of positive feedback after the meeting, I had a number of emails from other parish clerks and councillors that said they welcomed that. And this came up at the LGR conference last week, when the Minister for Local Growth, Alex Norris, said that he wanted to see parish and town councils being involved in the future, but he also made it clear that they are not formally part of the process because the LGR doesn't affect them. Alex Norris, the Minister for Local Growth, so he's responsible for the new towns and a collection of other responsibilities at MHCLG. So he was asked, does the government favour neighbourhood or area committees within the unitary authorities instead of parish councils? And he said, no, not instead of, but we think that's something that the new unitaries should look at. Because obviously, the new unitary authorities are going to be amongst the largest councils in the country, if, you know, if you follow the government's guideline of half a million, because there's only six other councils in the country out of 317 that are larger than half a million. So personally, I think that town and parish councils have a very important role to play going forwards, because the new unitary authorities will be much larger under whatever option gets adopted by the government. They will be much larger than people are used to, they'll be more remote, less, less democratic, and less accountable. And that's why, that's why I'm...
Sorry, just to, the question wasn't about their role in the future, the question was, should they be involved in the decision-making process?
Yes, well, Mr Evely's just pointed out they are, it is an option, when you fill out, do you represent, I thought they did, I'm glad you confirmed that, because I looked at it last night. When you, there's an option to say, are you an individual, do you represent a business, do you represent a parish or town council, that is one of the options.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yes. Sorry? Question one, there we go.
Just to come back, you know, it's incredible, there's 15 councils, 15 of them, and there's at least 16 opinions on how this, where this should go.
No, I think there's, I think, to be fair, there's four.
Oh, okay.
Four or five.
It was said in jest.
There's nine councils supporting the five unitary, and then there's another, as I say, there's another six councils that aren't terribly clear.
It just seems to me that, the wider we throw the net to get opinions, the even more it expands. And you say you've got up to 4.9, was it 4.9 or 3.9, I can't remember. So I was just interested in your opinion of how much parish councils, I mean, they want to be involved, because they want to say how they will be involved in the future in a way, they don't actually care that much about whether it's three, four, or five, my experience. And yet, that is the question that's being asked at the moment. And it does seem to me that that Southend survey might be a bit premature, but I understand in, maybe you can confirm, if Kevin said it as well, there will be a county council survey done as well, but with more information about the types and the information round.
I don't know, so we, we thought that far from being premature, it was urgent to get on with it, because we wanted to have some information from the public, because the public had been told nothing to date, and when people were asking questions. So we thought it was important to get a survey out there to seek public opinion. But we are drawing up the formal business case, we want to have the draft ready by the end of July, which is why we have put a 20th of July date on the survey for responses. I would encourage anybody else who's thinking of putting forward a business case to make the case for theirs as well. Councillor Bentley has dismissed the option for five, having previously said that he wasn't going to get into the business of dissing other people's proposals. And, but we wait to see where the other, you know, what happens with the other business cases. All I can speak for is the case for five, which I'm pushing for, and, yeah, you may have seen the Chronicle, so, which reports on that. I'm very, as I said, I'm very keen to the town and parishes have a strong role going forward, which is why we'll be bringing forward a proposal, we've discussed this with councillor Whitehead, for a community governance review. Brentwood and Chelmsford and Colchester are all in a similar situation of having the urban bit, the main urban bit unparished, and the majority of the district is parished, which we think particularly under a new unitary structure is not very democratic.
I mean, on the basis of trying to save money, having, continuing with the parish councils, and then having another layer of community governance does, doesn't sit well with me, I'd say.
The government says, the government says one of the reasons for doing reorganisation is to save money, I'd never believed it. I don't believe that it will save any money. It might in 10 years' time, but it's going to cost an awful lot of money in the first five or six years. It might save money in eight to 10 years' time.
No further comment, thank you.
Councillor Highland?
Thank you, Chair. I've got a fairly simple, straightforward one question, funnily enough, usual for me. Is our generally affordable homes policy 35%?
Our affordable housing policy in the local plan is 35%. So I'm not, what do you mean? Yes? Yeah, our local, yeah. All sites over, of 11 or more units are expected to deliver 35% of them as affordable. And the local plan defines, the government defines affordable rent, which we don't like, so we're trying to redefine it in our local plan to make it actually affordable.
So I'll talk more in an item of business later on in the agenda, if that's okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions? No, all right then, okay. So we're moving on to six, finance. We have a financial update from councillor Davidson.
Thank you. The update paper, I'd like to take us back to last year. At council in July 2024, we changed the rhythm of financial updates, and according to that, there is no update at this meeting. But we are nevertheless adding a further report today. Doing that improves transparency, and you might conclude when we consult on the, on how that revised rhythm has gone, that it's helpful to have an update at this meeting, which would be fine. But actually, the really specific reason for bringing a paper today is that we want Cabinet and councillors to be aware that the rather dire financial position for future years, that I set out in February in the budget report, has actually improved significantly. We still expect to lose grant from the government, and Budget 2027 is still going to be a challenge. But nevertheless, what this, what the outturn paper that went to audit and risk shows, the revenue outturn paper, is that the city council's finances are resilient, and therefore we're more optimistic now than we were, what, a bit over four months ago. So I think it's important to make sure that we don't continue believing something that's no longer true. The report is simply for noting, but it does draw together the strings of those two reports, the revenue outturn for last year and the capital outturn for last year, that normally just go to audit and risk and don't go any further. But this time, we felt it was important to bring them here. And I'll pause at that point, I'm happy to, to answer any specific questions.
We have discussed this at meetings, we are aware of what's in the paper, and I have no particular questions to ask.
Okay then, has the report noted?
Agreed.
Yes, thank you. Right, the Treasury Management Outturn?
So the Treasury Management Outturn is a report that goes to Treasury Management and Investment Committee in June every year, it then comes to Cabinet before going on to council. The overview position is that council adopts a Treasury Management strategy on the basis of advice of Treasury Management Investment Subcommittee that comes through Cabinet. The outturn simply reports on whether officers were able to implement the strategy as, as it requires, or whether there's been any points to note, any departures from the strategy. The answer is that last year, there were no departures, everything was essentially fine. There are one or two challenges that have occurred as a consequence of world events, particularly new tariffs and the impact that has had on markets. But apart from that, there's nothing very significant. So I will pause there and answer any questions.
Well, the same applies really, I'm a member of that, and of course, it comes to council next week anyway.
All right, so we've noted that report. Thank you. Moving on, we have an item about co-living spaces. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm bringing a report this evening to Cabinet seeking approval for the planning advice note on co-living housing. Its purpose is to guide planning decisions for co-living developments in Chelmsford, especially as this housing model doesn't currently fit neatly into any existing use classes. The key points around the report about the paper are that there's a local restriction, so co-living would only be supported in Chelmsford city centre because of its access to services, jobs, and sustainable transport. It's not the same as self-contained housing, which is use class C3, or HMOs, or hotels or hostels, or student accommodation. It typically involves a short-term lease of three to 18 months, and private en suite rooms, and extensive communal facilities, so it's quite a new model for Chelmsford. And it's important that we have this guidance in place as planning applications come forward. We're looking at high-quality communal kitchens, lounges, workspaces, and laundry areas, active frontages, and inclusive access which are particularly important to the vibrancy of our city centre, and affordable housing contributions. I understand that despite not being self-contained, co-living units are still treated as residential for the purposes of our policy DM2, meaning 35% affordable housing, or payment towards that off-site. So, as I said, as a relatively new form of housing, where in large buildings, people have their own private living space and share communal facilities, such as those kitchens, dining areas, and recreational spaces, it's important to have an advice note in place to articulate our expectations as a council in respect of co-living housing, as existing planning policies and standards may not apply. The draft of the co-living planning advice note was considered by Chelmsford Policy Board prior to public consultation, and following that public consultation, the draft advice note was then amended to reflect where appropriate the consultation responses, and the amended advice note was further circulated amongst members of Policy Board prior to it being considered by Cabinet this evening. Therefore, I consider that the co-living planning advice note has undergone ample review by both the public and by Policy Board, and I would recommend this evening, Chair, that Cabinet approve the document. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Highland?
Did I hear correctly that you would put these as affordable homes? So if a planning application came forward, co-living properties would be a portion of the affordable homes?
As I understand it, there will be a stipulation, as there are more than 11 units within these developments, that there will be a contribution towards affordable housing. Whether or not that be site-specific is a matter for discussion, but that a contribution would be made in order to add to the pot that we do have to fund affordable housing in Chelmsford.
Thank you. So as I understand it, and forgive me if I misinterpret what you said in the report, is that these are private dwellings? They're not for rent, so they're not in the affordable rent category?
Mr Potter will detail you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Highland. So they're not dwellings. So first of all, they're not C3, they're not dwellings. Promoters of cohousing are seeking to say that our policies and other councils' policies don't apply to them, because they're not dwellings. However, our policy was, our affordable housing policy was specifically worded to say residential accommodation, not dwelling. And because of that, we are seeking a off-site contribution. Now, it wouldn't be appropriate for affordable rented housing to be in, in a block of the type of accommodation that cohousing seeks. So our planning obligations, SBD, has a formula for a commuted sum, and that then, that commuted sum will be sought through a section 106 legal agreement to then be spent on the housing priorities, the affordable housing priorities at that point in time.
Thank you. So as I understand your answer, it's a benefit to our affordable housing aims. It's another contribution. It's another contribution to it, all right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, is that paper agreed? Good, okay. Well, we're moving swiftly on. So, uh, that's it for the public items. Um, uh, just remind us what ones go to council? Which reports go to council? It's the, uh, the two fin- the finance one, yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, right, uh, there aren't any press and public presence, but so if we switch off the feed and I, because I move under section one hundred and eighty-four of the local on the attack, the public be excluded from the meeting. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Right. Okay. Um, hopefully you go-